I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Warrenville Public Safety and Finance Committee, the whole regular meeting, Monday, May 24th, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually on the official YouTube channel of the city. Public comment will be only available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Deputy Clerk Gravetti, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer? Absent. Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett? Also absent. Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Would you rise as you're able to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the time that we usually set aside for public comments. Deputy Director, do we have anybody signed up this evening? Okay, so moving along, Mayor, do you have any comments?
Just a reminder that Black Friday and all the shopping that's going to be coming up this weekend, shop local. Start local, shop local if any way, shape or form, because most of that stays here. So, the West DuPage Chamber of Commerce has got a big emphasis coming out on that shortly, so look for that as well. But if you can, find something local to get somebody for Christmas, or the holidays coming up, so that's it.
City Council? Anything? City? No? Okay, no comments. Moving along to the business of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is consideration of city liability insurance renewal for calendar year 2026. Let's see, Juan Ortiz, our Human Resources Generalist, is going to present this.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight to speak about the city's 2026 annual insurance renewal for all currently held city insurance coverages. I'm happy to share that our total renewal rate was listed at $593,654, which represents a .21% decrease from the previous year. That translates to about $1,200. We had anticipated a 12% increase, so this represents an estimated savings of $30,800 compared to what we originally had budgeted. The insurance market has seen an increase in carriers this year. It was kind of the reason given to us for why we saw a slight decrease in our renewal rate. Overall, our brokers said we had a very favorable package for calendar year, very favorable renewal package for the calendar year 2026. Additionally, our workers' comp carrier reserved $15,000, a little over $15,000 in grant funds to use for city-related safety training and programming, which is in line with what we received last year. Also included in your backup agenda materials is a letter from Rich, the city's consultant from Gallagher, explaining the renewal quotes in an overall letter. And lastly, an insurance market report from September 2025 that kind of goes over like the half mid-year report of insurance trends. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Alderman Widener?
It's terrific to hear about the decrease, maybe you get a decrease in these kind of funds. It's a huge accomplishment and appreciate whatever things the staff might have done to reduce that amount. I know that we have an excellent safety record and the $15,000 in additional grant money will help go a long way to keep everyone safer and unharmed the rest of the year and as they carry out their professional tasks. So, appreciate it, and that's all I had.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council accept a renewal quote from Gallagher for city insurance coverage for calendar year 2026 in the amount of $593,654. Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Berry and a second by Alderman Wilkie. Let's see, would this be just a voice vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number two is a presentation of the city's strategic plan initiatives and fiscal year 26 citywide work plan updates. And this is being presented by Assistant City Manager Alma Morgan.
Thank you. Included with your agenda backup materials are updates to the fiscal years 2025 and 2026 strategic plan initiatives and the mid-year citywide work plan. The strategic plan adopted in 2024 sets the city's long-term priorities, and it assures that staff, volunteers, and elected officials are all aligned with the goals and initiatives that are outlined in that plan. It helps us to coordinate across departments, anticipate challenges, make data-driven decisions, and to track progress over time. For fiscal year 26, there was one main change under the lead of the Community Development Department, following the November 11th committee direction to focus on the Route 59 corridor. This item is highlighted, along with a few other initiatives that were carried forward from the previous fiscal year. The citywide work plan highlights a major multi-departmental projects and their priorities. And this mid-year update provides the committee with an opportunity to review the progress and suggest any adjustments. At this time, staff welcomes any feedback or recommendations on the project priorities.
Any comments or feedback for staff? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question regarding the movement of initiatives from tier three to tier two to tier one, and how that takes place and whether there's a process for that.
The tier priorities, the focus is always on tier one and tier two priorities. Tier three priorities are initiatives that are desirable and that we would like to work on and really are only worked on if time permits. So, it's always been the focus that tier one and tier two priorities are the primary focus. If there is an opportunity to move up a tier three initiative and it fits within staff's work, then that item will be moved up. The only time, and it's not necessarily something that would need to be voted on, unless it's a brand-new item that was not presented and reviewed by council before, or if it's something that we need to take off completely. Does that help answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback? Seeing none, this was just for comments and direction for staff, and so we will move on to item number three. This is an informational update on 2026 employee health insurance premiums. Again, this is Assistant City Manager Alma Morgan.
Thank you. With health, health insurance costs are rising nationwide, and the city's January 2026 renewal reflects that trend with a significant increase over previous years. The key factors that contributed to that included higher medical claims, rising prescription costs, and broader market trends. We receive preliminary estimates for calendar year 2027, and those renewals show an increase that could potentially range between 13.5% to over 21%. And I wanted to just note that the city has not seen double-digit increases in health insurance costs since 2015. Staff will continue to monitor trends and to balance the comprehensive coverage with cost management. Tonight, we're just providing this update to keep the committee aware of future budgetary impacts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Mayor Johnson?
Just curious, are we locked into the co-op, or could we go out and do our own thing if we wanted to?
We could step out. We are not locked in.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Widener?
Is there any way to quantify the percent increase to what the impact dollar-wise will be on the budget?
We could obtain those numbers. I don't have them readily available, but Finance Department is aware of that.
Okay. Is Kevin?
Oh, maybe you're right.
I was just going to say, we already are analyzing those costs, looking at right now over the next three years based on your current enrollment. And as we get a little more into the budget, we have those projections available for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Berry?
As I look through these numbers with Blue Cross Blue Shield in the PPO plan, this looks like an excellent deal for the city because they're paying for, just for an employee, $39.82, which is what I pay for a company that has 40,000 employees. So, these are pretty decent rates for a city this size. These are the employee rate, is $39.82?
And then the full rate is that one?
There's that one over there, but this is per month, correct?
Yes.
Right. Yeah, so they're only going to pay for one person, $39.82, which is the same amount of money close to what I pay. So, I think these are pretty decent rates that you've received, so good job.
Thank you. I will add that we did conduct a survey of our comparable communities to see where their trends were at, and we are right about in the middle. Some of those comparable communities are not with the IPBC. Their rates were significantly higher than ours were, but the trend, what we're hearing nationwide is that health insurance costs are rising rapidly.
Again, any other questions, comments? Again, this was for information only, so we will move on to item number four, fiscal year 27 budget consideration submissions. I think we're going to do these separately.
We are. I'm going to introduce the item, and then we'll go to each other.
Okay, Kevin, would you introduce each item for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to point out before we proceed that I did send out an email this afternoon. One of the items in the backup was actually duplicated, and you did not receive a staff memo that went along with the first item in the list, which involves this sidewalk plan. And that email went out to you with that staff memo attached this afternoon. First item involves a sidewalk plan and was put forward by Mayor Johnson.
New guy here, so I'm not familiar with what the discussion has been in the past of addressing all these going forward, but my concern was that our last sidewalk plan was 2015, so that this would be an opportunity to readdress that and look at the priorities and maybe identify if there are specific spots within that plan that we should really try to address, maybe along Central to connect that neighborhood with Hubble, or maybe along Riverside, or that there are some things out there that perhaps could be done that were not being done right now to make the town more walkable. So, that was my contention in looking at that map on my wallet. It says 2015 on it. It seems kind of long ago, and I'm sure some of those priorities perhaps may have changed as well. So, open to any questions or comments people might have about that suggestion that I brought forward to reevaluate, or anything from staff.
Any questions? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just wonder if staff has any kind of updated map that shows any of the gaps that would be important to connect, and whether we would have any kind of prioritized list of gaps from the areas that are ending and not connected to other places that, as the mayor said, would make the city more walkable.
City Administrator White?
It's before Phil responds to the map portion. We do have in the strategic plan a task item for fiscal year 27 to reengage the Complete Streets Work Group, and one of the functions of that work group would be to look at figuring out how to prioritize where there are gaps and where we could potentially look at connection points and prioritize where we might want to look at adding sidewalk, and then, of course, how to pay for the addition of those sidewalks.
I don't know if we have a formal, like, updated map, but I know we have a lot of the information in GIS, so it wouldn't be hard to produce that, but I would suggest we do that as part of the fiscal year 27 Complete Streets Work Group process if we do it.
Would that require a consultant, or is that something that if the work group were reconvened, that they would be able to adjust the sidewalk priority plan and find the gaps? And I'm just trying to determine whether or not we would need the $15,000 or $20,000 in the budget to cover the expense of taking the first step in 2027, which would be, I think, to discover the gaps in order to make the community more walkable.
I think we'd need, we don't have a GIS person on staff at this point, so we would need to use our, utilize our GIS consultant to do it. I would, I don't know yet what their contract is going to be for next year. It's, we've been going year by year with them, so depending on the progress they're making, some of their tasks this year could be incorporated into their contract next year. I would, in my memo, I put in, I estimate about $10,000 worth of time to really and truly update a map, but...
So, your estimate for the budget next year would be 10, or 15, or?
10.
10?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess...
It gets her going anyway.
Yeah, I'd make a motion then to move this forward with the estimated amount, for at least the time being, of $10,000 to move this to the budget consideration process.
Do I have a second? We have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The second, second submission?
Item number two is for speed cameras. That was presented also by Mayor Johnson. So, the item here came from actually a DuPage Mayor's and Managers Meeting that Administrator White and I went to, and Schaumburg laid out a plan they've done for a couple of years now, I think, where they have speed cameras. They cannot issue tickets, but they do issue notices and warnings to people who are speeding that are caught on speed cameras. And they noticed a direct result into slowing down of speed within certain areas in town. And they have these portable, so they can move them around and use them in different places. So, that's why I threw that out here. Schaumburg is not Warrenville, and Warrenville is not Schaumburg, obviously, but it's something I think we should consider looking into, given the constant ebb and flow of questions saying, "You're speeding here," or "Speeding there," if there were a way in the future for us to have portable units to place around town occasionally and fit into the department's plan of addressing these concerns, then I thought it was worth looking into. And I know, I think staff also has talked to the folks in Schaumburg and gotten some pricing and looked at how that all works as well. It's not inexpensive. I'm sure it's going to get less expensive as time goes on, but it's something I think we should consider.
Any comments? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So, is this different than what we have now? Because we have moving units now.
Yeah, these are actual cameras that can issue a...
Oh, they're actually looking at the license plates, okay.
And it says, "We noticed," I don't know what the verbiage is, "but you were caught speeding, going down Continental 45 or whatever, please stop." Or, I don't know what the verbiage is that they use, but they noticed just that type of reinforcement was slowing traffic in parts of town that it was used in, in Schaumburg.
So, they actually noticed a big enough difference, too?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the police chief if he's aware of this kind of technology and whether he's gotten any feedback from any other communities that may have, may have used it, and how it might be working out for them from your vantage point.
So, I am aware of the technology, and I spoke to Schaumburg directly. In fact, I spoke to the sergeant there, initially spoke to the chief, and then I spoke to the sergeant there who oversees the project going on. We're looking at some of the manpower hours and the costs associated with this, and whether it fits our needs here. We also discussed this staff together, that we also have the traffic study going on. So, we're trying to figure out whether we, where we have a speeding problem, if we do have a speeding problem, and how could we address those citywide rather than having an isolated camera in a certain location, especially with some of the cost of those cameras. And there's, there is nothing coming back. They're just issuing warnings, and that's it. So, so we're looking at that further to kind of see if that fits in with the traffic study, and I think that moving forward, once we have the information from that traffic study, we'd be able to make a better determination of whether this is something that'll work within Warrenville. Again, like the mayor said, Warrenville and Schaumburg are two different, you know, apples and oranges as far as, you know, the roadways and the traffic going through, and they have those on major roadways where we, we have major roadways, but we'd have to make sure that it would work out within the city of Warrenville, so...
Are you aware of any other new technologies that might be, you know, worth looking at as we move forward and get the results from the consultant's traffic study that's underway right now?
So, when we did meet with the traffic study company that was doing the eval, they gave us some suggestions that they were looking at as well. So, again, we're going to be looking at all different things, including technology, or the way the roadway is made up, or some traffic calming devices. So, they came up with a bunch of things that they're going to try to fit in within our city to see what fits best for us, and we can always make that decision once we get those results back.
It seems like, for the time being, we'd want to move this forward then to consider and try to get as many costs as we can for both the initial cost of the equipment and the annual fees for it, and consider that along with the costs of the traffic calming devices that we may want to include into whatever roads we decide to address that come forward as a result of the traffic study, so that we're considering all available options by cost and effectiveness. And so, I just wonder with that, too, besides slowing traffic down, too, there's also, as the mayor was talking about, connections being made with sidewalks and bicycle routes, and I just wonder whether or not, you know, the whole picture ought to be studied, not just restricting traffic flow also, but also, you know, allowing residents to, you know, improve the walkability score and also improve the bike ability where feasible, and I think that that all deserves, you know, close study and scrutiny, and we should look at every available, you know, new technology or method of trying to bring those areas together when we make a decision after the traffic study is completed and we get the report.
So, about the cost, we did look at some of the initial costs. I reached out to the company to kind of see. It is not the same cost that Schaumburg is paying, because Schaumburg is a test community, so they've kind of got a discounted rate, and we're looking at about $3,000 per camera within our municipal, per month. So, it is, it is rather expensive, and I agree with you. I think we should look at any technology that we could get, but probably also technology that we can afford as a community. We've got to look at the return on that, and some of those, some of the latest technology that's out there tends to run pretty high as far as cost. So, again, we're looking at it big-picture wise, so it's exactly what you're suggesting. So, we're taking a big-picture look and seeing if it's something that works within the city.
I'm even in favor of getting one camera, using decoy cameras that aren't $3,000 a month if they're made out of shoeboxes or cardboard and painting them black and putting them out or whatever, so that, you know, it would probably, in some cases, have about the same, same effect.
I know, but you just told everybody, so now...
I'm sure they're all listening to me.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, and that $3,000 per camera per month is just the cost of the equipment. There's staff time, obviously. Somebody would have to be monitoring and managing this program because it doesn't just happen on its own. There's some amount of staff time would come with it.
That's correct.
And I know this needs to kind of fold in with the traffic study, the transportation study that's going on, as well as my next request, which was for traffic calming or speed, speed humps, whatever, speed cushions, speed bumps, whatever you want to call them. Where are we at with that study right now? I know, is it halfway there, or is it three quarters away? What's the timing on that?
They collected the data in the fall. They're currently evaluating the data, and then we're, staff, police, and public works are going to meet with the consultant to review the data as a result. And I do want to remind you that the traffic study isn't looking at every single street in town. It is looking specifically at the streets that are over 25 miles an hour, like Galusha, Batavia, the three sections of Batavia Road, and roads like that. It's looking at samples of residential streets, because we've got a mishmash of like 20 and 25 mile an hour speed limits to see how people are behaving on those streets. Ultimately, there's a, a portion of this is a traffic calming toolkit, which is going to be gathering the tools that we have, and when there's a report of people wanting a stop sign, or they're, they're speeding on their street, it's going to have a process for how the city takes in that request, considers it, and then the steps we do to evaluate whether it is actually a speeding problem or not. Because my suspicion is that most of the time, there's probably not a speeding problem. I do know there are speeding problems in town, and I know of a couple of locations, but it's not, every, every person that complains isn't necessarily a speeding, there's not necessarily a speeding problem. We do need to evaluate that and determine whether there is one or not before we jump and try to put a solution, and before we know if there's actually a problem or not. So, it's a, the part of, there's a study that's looking at the speed limits and how traffic's behaving, but then also, there's a, going to be a process and a toolkit, so we have all these tools in our kit and see what's appropriate when.
Director Kukler, can you remind me when the traffic study is supposed to be completed, anticipated completion?
It would be early in '26. I'm thinking it will probably be presenting in February at this point.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I think there's a fair amount of public interest in the speeding issue, and I hope that the city can do what it can to alert residents that if they have an interest in this, that they are able to, you know, either see the presentation or, you know, receive the documents of the, of the presentation so that they can, you know, look at it. I know there's a lot of awareness and concern, and the other thing, besides the data that's collected, I've come, come to find out that neighbors, you know, have observational experiences where they can kind of understand the personality of some of the streets in their neighborhood, and when it's busy, and how like on a right turn on red, a crosswalk might be, I don't want to say inappropriately placed, but placed too close to that intersection as the person is making the right-hand turn onto a roadway and doesn't have the stopping distance sometimes approaching a crosswalk when they're coming around a sharp, sharp corner. And I think some of the neighbors can, you know, capture and identify those kinds of personality traits in their neighborhood, whereas a data collection system wouldn't always see those little connections or appearances that happen on a semi-routine or sporadic basis, whatever, whatever it might be. So, I just hope that, you know, we can get some feedback from the residents and that they'll be noticed on the, on the report to be able to see it and understand it. Thanks.
Yeah, it'll be at a public meeting, so there'll be plenty of notice.
Alderman Berry?
I, I'm not crazy about this. I don't care for this, $3,000 a month for one camera, and all they're going to do is send a letter out that says, "Hey, you were speeding. Don't do it again." To me, it's not really going to do any... really going to do anything to anybody. I mean, you can collect information all you want, but I think we're trying to do this with the, with the traffic study that we're doing right now. So, to me, at this time, I don't, I don't, I would prefer not to send this forward, to maybe wait one more year and see what happens with the, with the, with the study and where we're at. And then take a look and see where technology is at the time and see what the pricing is. But for one camera, and if we have streets in town that people know that we're having issues with, where we have more complaints than others, why aren't we putting the speed trap things there, whatever it's called? I think that would be more beneficial. I know the one on Batavia Road, people come down the road and they see that they're speeding and they slow down because they're also seeing their neighbors are seeing how fast they're driving. So, I think those would be actually beneficial in some of our residential streets, not on the streets where it's, it's heavily traveled like on Batavia Road. So, right now for me, this is a lot of money. And I think that we spent a lot of money on the traffic study. And we need to find out what the results of that is first.
Alderman Widener.
Yeah, I just think that at this point, we're more or less in the brainstorming stage about how to handle the different traffic issues and things like that. So, collecting data and estimates on all the different technologies and all the methods that are available is what you would do during any brainstorming stage. And then, you know, I'm not saying that we'll necessarily go ahead with $36,000 a year and fees and everything like that. But to eliminate it from discussion, I think would be short sighted when we're trying to collect all the ideas that, that we can to address traffic issues. And so, I think, you know, it, it just should be included with all the other options that, that are available and not throw it, throw it out because we have initial sticker shock, you know? There's, sometimes there's grants available. Sometimes there's different things that might come along where would make it affordable and an option that you would want to pursue even if it was for two months or something like that. We don't, we don't know all the different details of something like this. So, I think it would be premature to throw it out and move it into another fiscal year without considering it with all the other options that might be coming forward or available.
Alderman Berry.
I'm not suggesting throw it out. I'm just saying maybe move it forward one year, just until we have the traffic study completed and we see what the issues are at that time and where we have issues in the city with traffic problems. I don't want to put cameras where there aren't, where we don't have problems, you know? So, to me, just moving it forward one year is, is not a lot.
Mayor.
As the, as the author of this suggestion threw it out there, I appreciate the conversation about, do we do it now? Do we do it somewhere? Do we just put money in the budget for maybe sometime? And I think both this one and my other one needs to wait for the traffic study to come out because there's going to be more to it than that. But I think just having this conversation and knowing that services like Decra are not cheap and they can have an impact on speeding. Similarly, speed bumps and things that we can put around, those can have an impact too. But until we have the study, I think both of these two kind of need to be appreciated for what they are. They were thrown out there as an idea, as something to consider and probably something maybe a year out to consider more fine tuned as to what we should actually put in a budget for it. So, those are my two cents on it. And I appreciate hearing the feedback on it because I share similar thoughts both ways. You don't want to just start doing something just to feel good about it and spend 36 grand and not get any results. And you don't want to not do nothing because we know there are places that need to be addressed. And hopefully that's where the traffic study comes up with some concrete things to give us ideas to take forward. So, so I'm happy with taking this one and the, the next one and setting him aside. So, if anybody would object to that, I'm happy to do that. At least we got the conversation started. Unless you require a vote in it.
I don't believe we need a vote since the author is requesting to delay it unless there's objections to that.
Staff's not objecting to that.
Seeing that there are no objections to this one moving forward, we will table this for now. Or, I guess it's not tabling it. It's, it's being withdrawn.
Yeah, it's withdrawn until next year to potentially be reevaluated.
As well as the next one, which was also a traffic calming, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And this was more like portable, portable traffic calming devices, whether it be more of the signage we have that says, thank you for not speeding or, or more of the speed bumps or speed humps or speed cushions, wherever you go. People call them different things. But I have seen portable issues of these as well, which clearly are, there's the cost of the item itself. And then there's obviously staff that has to go into managing those and moving them around too. But again, that kind of goes back to the traffic study. So, I'd suggest setting this aside for future reference and moving on to the, to the next item, which is, unless anybody wants to talk about speed cushions and speed bumps.
The next item was the Ferry Creek Stream Revitalization in Warrenville. And that was submitted by Mr., or Alderman Widener.
And?
And, and myself, Alderman.
And I think, I was just asking, when I brought this forward this year, whether or not there was movement on it because it had been presented for a previous year's consideration. And I just wanted to see if there had been progress with DuPage County Stormwater and our connections there and potential grant dollars and things like that. Because I, I think there's a couple homeowner's associations that I'm aware of that feel like they, you know, are definitely ready to, I don't think they have funding, but I think they're ready to, you know, kick in with their strong support for it and any kind of voluntary effort that might go into this. They would be eager and enthusiastic to participate with it. So, I guess I would look to staff to see if they have an update on it. Thanks.
Christina.
Thank you. So, the, so we did meet with DuPage County staff this past year over the summer. They walked the creek, Ferry Creek, just alongside the two, the two main neighborhoods, Edge Brook and the one to the north. And so, they took a look at obviously the stream. But at that time, they didn't know of any grant funding that was available. They didn't have any more, all the ARPA money has been spent. However, most recently, staff has learned that the county has applied for 319B IEPA grant funding for the Ferry Creek watershed, which includes everything from the West Branch all the way up to the upstream watershed, as well as the lower DuPage, West Branch, DuPage River watershed as well. That type of study includes analyzing all of the, you know, existing detention ponds and other areas of land that water quality projects could occur in. They obviously walk, the county would walk all the streams. They have all of the municipalities a part of that stakeholder group as they are right now with the Upper West Branch, DuPage River study that they are currently doing. And they put together potential projects that can occur along these watersheds, everything from stream bank stabilizations to rain gardens, to other water quality type projects and put cost estimates associated with that. What the municipality and the county can do from that point forward is to look for further grant funding through the IPA, through the county's water, water quality grant program and other programs out there. It is though important to do this study first, for the county to do the study first so that you are put in the best position to obtain that grant funding. In the memo, I did describe that the IPA grant funding is not fully funded. It is 60/40. The DuPage County Water Quality Grant Program only funds up to 25% of construction costs with a maximum of $100,000. So, that's, it's a very limited bucket there. As well as the length of stream is important because you don't want to do just a part of the stream. Because if you do work on a part of the stream, maybe that's really not where the issue is, you know? In this, in this part of Ferry Creek by Edge Brook, there is a lot of erosion in that area. But it could be also be coming from the upstream end of the creek. So, if you just work on that part of the creek, you may still be getting all of the erosion from upstream. Same thing with downstream of the creek. If you just fix that one part, you may be creating issues downstream. So, in the memo, we described going from Butterfield Road all the way up to the upstream end and the costs, so, proximate costs associated with that based upon my communications with the county on, on their similar type of projects. So, so the information provided in the memo just talks about, you know, the update and where we're at and where we could be. But, you know, I'm suggesting that we wait to see what the county comes back with for that study and continue to work with them to potentially move forward something in the future. But at this time, just kind of wait and see.
Alderman Widener.
Great. Well, I appreciate your hard work on this. And, you know, it looks like it's moving in a direction. And we're hopeful that we'll get grant funding and that all the stars will align so that, you know, kids can fish and catch crayfish and frog, chase frogs and things like that. And the stream's someday soon. And I appreciate your diligence on following through on this and, and working on it with the Stormwater Committee and all your other contacts.
No problem. It, it is also included in our, I think Amy had updated the FY '26 Work Plan for Community Development. It is a line item in there now so that now you could see the updates for the rest of this year and potentially next year as well on the Community Development Work Plan.
Thank you for your updates. And given that we've gotten these updates, Alderman Widener, do we want to take this one off the docket as well?
It, it sounds like it's going to be reported on and is in, in the system. So, it doesn't need a dollar amounts assigned to it. And it's on the staff's radar for strategic initiative or.
Correct.
Plan.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Moving along, the last one is the Plan Commission Meeting Recording and Publication Initiative. This one was submitted by Alderman Lockett. Mayor Johnson, you want to champion this one?
And John is not here, but being a former Plan Commission member, as a number of you are, you know that everything that starts in the city starts at Plan Commission as far as development wise goes. So, the conversation I know has been had over the years of televising those meetings as ours are televised on Monday. So, that was the impetus of this. And some of the conversations I know John has had with staff, and I think there may be some comments from staff about this as well in addition to what's on the, on the memo. Relatively small expense. However, you do need to find somebody to do this. Like anything else, the technology's in the back room. It's already there. It's the people time. And kind of the bang for your buck in some ways. I'm speaking on both sides of this and in support of it, but also knowing we get very few impressions and people watching these things when they do get out. I do know that Hometown Happenings and other places, we get the word out and the weekly updates on meetings coming up. So, there's, maybe there are ways to tweak how we emphasize different developments that are coming before the Plan Commission to try to get more people to, to watch or to come to the meetings. But nonetheless, it may be a, a minor expense to throw in the budget going forward for conversation, providing you can find the staff to run it. Administrator White, I think you had some comments also?
I think you covered it. We, we do have some reporting about the viewership. It is relatively low for these meetings despite even in the last year, moving to YouTube Live and live streaming the meetings, which we used to only record and, and publish them after the fact. And we used GoToMeeting for a period of time for people to join the meetings. But even with the data that we have of the last 12 to 18 months of YouTube Live, the viewership is still pretty low. So, I think, I don't want to speak for Alderman Lockett, who's not here, but I believe his intention or thought process was that perhaps televising the Plan Commission meeting, we'd get more viewership or active participation on development issues at the early stages rather than the committee of the whole or council point in time. I just don't know if that's actually, if that will actually bear fruit.
And it might be a, a chicken and egg type thing too. If you build it, they will come. We don't know. I mean, clearly, they're not flocking to watch these or city council meetings, but it is available to them. So.
Alderman Widener, you had a question?
It's not a question. It's just a, I, I think if, if I can share some of Alderman Lockett's concern too, it's projects getting pretty far down the track at Plan Commission meetings. And then this body becoming aware of the development and, and the blueprints and things like that. And sometimes before the council becomes aware of it, there's been a lot of approvals made at Plan Commission. And I think it, it's sometimes hard to catch up with when you're sitting in, at least in, in my seat. I've seen a lot of developments that have come along where you, it's difficult to add input because it's kind of, I guess, what I would say at a later stage of the game. And I've thought about this and I, I thought that, and I've talked to some people, and I know sometimes they have listening sessions when a new development is being considered or brought forward where it would either be a joint Plan Commission, City Council meeting so that we hear it at the same time the Plan Commission first hears about it, or some other method so that we could react to it and state our concerns from the get-go rather than waiting until it's far down the track and having to react to landscaping plan or, or, or whatever. And have, you know, kind of an open listening session with the developer to see what they're, what they're proposing. And then we could all react to it at the same time and either kind of say, well, you know, we don't have an objection to it. We think that the Plan Commission should, you know, move it forward. Or maybe with these considerations, it would be palatable for us to, to look at. So, I think it, I'm looking at, at some way of, of solving that issue so that when developments are, are brought forward, I'm kind of fully aware of their process and, and progress from the beginning to the end. Because I, I can't make it into all the different, you know, Plan Commission meetings when they're discussing the, the details of some of the developments. So, that's my thoughts on this. And whether or not it's, you know, it may not be putting a camera in the Plan Commission meetings. It, it might be some other way to, to solve the, the problem or the, the concern that I have. And I think Alderman Lockett has and maybe a few others. Thanks.
Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. The reason I'm interested in this, one of the reasons is I often struggle when things come unanimously out of Plan Commission, which means they don't go on a committee of the whole. They just come to our consent agenda. And I have a responsibility to then go back, if I haven't read all the minutes every single time, to figure out, am I, I'm going to yes, vote something I may not know actually a lot about. I do like to attend the Plan Commission meetings, but I can't attend all of them. So, it's always a struggle I have when it happens. And it happens quite frequently that it comes to us with a unanimous vote. So, however this gets addressed or when, I think I would be in favor of finding some way to make, getting some of that information a little bit easier.
Any other comments, questions? Alderman Berry.
Looking at the information about the costs, they're talking about $2,500 annually, which includes the staff and the coordinator time, which is the rate, I guess, that's paid by the City Council and Committee of the Whole meetings, plus minor equipment or maintenance expenses. What is the cost to upload these things onto the YouTube? This is not listed here. Does anyone know?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, the YouTube sharing platform is free, so there's no cost to that.
Oh, okay.
And the staff time, staff's memo, um, estimated staff time is just under $1,800 a year, but that's assuming that we have a, um, in-house employee who's willing to do the video technology piece of it. If we have to outsource it to a consultant, that cost ends up being just under $8,000.
Okay. So if we could find someone who would be a staff member who would be willing to do this like we have on our Monday night meetings, um, that would be fine with me because I was on the Plan Commission for a short period of time and, um, I know this would be helpful. So, um, I, I think this is something that we could at least look into and move this piece forward.
Do I have a motion to move this one forward? Alderman Berry?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to move the Plan Commission Meeting Recording and Publication Initiative forward to the, um, fiscal year 2027 budget consideration.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we do have one more, um, submission to bring forward and that one is... The Climate Action Plan that was approved in 2016 and that was submitted by Alderman Widener.
Yes, thank you Chairman. This was brought to my attention by, uh, members of the community of a concern about the local environment and, uh, they pointed out that this, um, um, Climate Action Plan had been voted on and approved in 2016 and that, uh, also, um, there'd been a community survey that, uh, showed that I think of about 90% of the people surveyed indicated that they had strong favor for the environmental things that the city could be doing. And so it, uh, caused me to think about the way that, um, we established the aesthetic enhancement fund in the city and the special event fund where a s- a small percentage of funds was taken out of hotel motel tax on an annual basis. And there was a line item bucket that was identified for a certain amount of funding to go into that line item or that bucket with, that would support the public art that we have going every few years or a couple of years in Warrenville and also, um, the special events that are supported by the hotel and motel tax. This could be a similar situation where a small percentage and I didn't, oh, I, I think I put down $15,000 to $20,000 annually just as a placeholder, but, um, I think getting a start on it because the city has such a strong interest of identifying places where native plants and materials could be planted, uh, would be something that I think the EAC would be more than happy to work on and in the same respects that TAC works on the public art and that they could identify public areas and, uh, spots where the, um, money from the hotel and motel tax could be distributed to improve the landscapes and, uh, wetland features on city-owned properties. And, um, I think the, the funding could also include, you know, um, I, I recognize that you don't just plant something like this, not have maintenance costs, that this could, uh, this fund could also be established to percentage-wise, I don't have all the details worked out, but by percentage-wise, it could cover the costs of, you know, the different maintenance requirements for some of these natural areas that would be propagated in the, in the, in the city, uh, on the land holdings. And I think it would also blend well with our marketing adventure in, in Warrenville naturally. I just think there'd, there'd be, uh, very strong residential support and, uh, American and Bloom and, and many other people in the community would, uh, appreciate having a small amount of funding available every year to address, um, natural plantings and bioswales and things like that. And it could be drawn from the hotel and motel tax.
Could the first year of this be an, uh, coming up with an initial plan of where these locations could maybe be and, and setting forth some priorities of which ones we would want to tackle first?
Certainly. And I think that's where you'd want to start is they have a prioritized plan of what your options are available.
Uh, Mayor Johnson?
And you mentioned the Environmental Act, the committee, Awareness Commission. Would they be the ones that you would identify as the kind of the keepers of this plan?
I think it would engage them in a similar fashion as the Tourism and Arts Council that they could become, you know, invested and, and involved in, uh, helping to develop recommendations, um, along with, you know, the, the same way, uh, city staff gets involved with the TAC grants and the, um, special events and things like that. I, I would think that it could, um, kind of parallel the, uh, efforts that are, that are made for artworks and, and special events that we, we set up. So, thanks.
Alderman Berry? Oh, Alderman Davalos.
I like the way you said that. Yeah. These sorts of things are always, they're exciting to do, they're, um, they're popular to do. Everybody wants to do them. I would just comment that, and maybe Director Kukler wants to comment on this. I think, for instance, the, the report that was given last Christmas about that time when, um, Director Kukler went over all the plantings we did. We had a grant, we were given trees. We've been trying to figure out replacing ashboard trees and working with citizens and I think there's been a lot done that if anything new, and, and it's been, some of it's been part of climate action, some of it's just been initiatives that have happened. But, um, I just feel that to do this and put this on different work plans and people's commission's plates, we, we need to coordinate with the city because I really was impressed with that report last and the EAC was very impressed. So we have a beginning. We have a start. And so I think, I, before starting a new initiative, I would sort of like to see how some of the goals you've laid out could coordinate in with what, some of the things that we already have and that, uh, the initiatives we're already doing. And, but it is a city council decision what goes on a lot of these work plans in the end. And so from any of the commissions. So I think we just need a coordinated, um, plan, um, of attack here on how we're going to continue what we're already doing and the discussions a lot of people are having with, um, maybe coordinate instead of start something completely new again. And I would love to have staff weigh in that too, which is probably what you are also interested in. So that's just my comment.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to bring this one forward?
I would, um, make a motion to bring it forward for consideration along with, um, staff strategy to, you know, I guess, address this as a potential, um, funding mechanism for future natural areas development, not necessarily to, um, I, I guess, identify the areas, but identify a funding source so that the amount that we do could potentially be expanded similar to, you know, before we had the art funding, we didn't have any kind of art pieces in and around and it allowed us to expand the, uh, uh, public art presence in the city. And I think this would help us to further expand the natural areas in, in the city. That's not a motion, I recognize that, but it's a continuation, I thought, so.
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So, um, what I'm, I'm hearing a lot of comparison to the TAC, um, acidic enhancement program. Are we looking at this as a, creating a grant program that the EAC would manage and, uh, groups like, I, I know Warrenville and Bloom has done a lot of this already for the city, but, you know, a group like Warrenville and Bloom would bring forward a project or idea and the city would be providing the funding source? Are we looking at this as city staff is initiating or finding locations and, um, hiring someone to install native plantings and then manage and maintain those native plantings? I just, I'm trying to clarify what the, what the request is so I understand the direction to staff.
I think it's kind of a joint project with the, uh, public art program where, um, staff helps to identify areas where projects could be placed in the city and also it comes forward from the community and I think from TAC members as far as placement of that. So, um, you know, we always have like ideas for natural area plantings, but we don't always have the budget. So this is primarily to establish a budget for planting and also for maintenance and to work, I guess, in concert, similar to TAC on identifying and prioritizing city-owned locations, not, not public, not subject to public properties being, um, brought forward.
Mayor Johnson?
Question, you might not have the answer to this, so it sounds to me like you're suggesting we budget an amount of money from the Tourism and Arts, uh, tax base, which is hotel motel, right? And I don't know if that can be spent on just native plantings or does it have to be done on something that might draw people into the community? So I, we need that clarification, I think. Another question would be, so is this talking about allocating money to the Environmental Awareness Commission? That each year they do something with it or is it that the Environmental Awareness Commission petitions TAC for funds to do something? So I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
Yeah.
Alderman Berry?
The, um, budget that the Tourism and Arts Commission receives every year, which is a small amount, it's not a lot of money. I think it may be about $25 or $2,800 a year. We always try when we put up a new, um, piece of artwork to, uh, use some of that money to plant around that artwork. This last year, um, we actually put up, um, signage at each of the pieces of art and we use the, the budget money for that. So it just depends on what's, uh, what TAC is going, you know, what we use that money for. We also make the brochure that goes online that, you know, everybody gets to see and, and the things that are available for the, um, all the grants that are given out that year. But I don't know how TAC would be involved in plantings, doing plantings for other spaces in the city. And I don't even know if the, I, I don't know if that would be a, a, an issue for, if you have a group, maybe that would be an issue for a certain group that wants to, uh, make an application to the Tourism and Arts Commission for doing plantings at certain locations. So maybe you would have a, a, an independent, an independent group come and put their application in to the Tourism and Arts Commission, just like Warrenville and Bloom does. And this is for beautification also of Warrenville through native plants, um, shrubs, trees, whatever, um, other than Warrenville and Bloom. So maybe that's an idea.
Kevin, you have a minute?
Yeah, there, there's a, a few things I want to co- co- comment on here. One is the hotel tax could be used to fund an, an, a territory like this. However, be, be reminded, the hotel fund is not an operational fund. We would have to do it through some sort of a transfer to some other place, whi- which the city council is more than, uh, more, more, more than able to decide to do if they want to do that. We have to make sure that we also do not spend the money in the hotel ta- tax fund over and over and over and over again because everybody wants to spend that money over and over and over again. Uh, the other thing is, is the department that has the TAC lia- liaison in it, um, I'm, I'm not going out on a limb by saying the TAC people that I'm aware of don't have any na- knowledge about how to deal with na- native plantings and, and that's thing related to what they do now. There's no, in my mind, there's no relationship between native plantings and the artwork and the events that they do. There would need to be some other type of group, which we don't currently have, to address that because I don't believe they have the expertise to, to, to do that now.
Alderman Berry?
Well, it's, um, yeah, you, it, you're right. They, they don't have. They, we just do a few plantings around, you know, the artwork that we have and we coordinate that with Public Works, um, as to, um, what would be best at those locations. But if they had, if you had a specific, um, group that was interested like Warrenville and Bloom, only they were interested in these native plantings and trees and, and shrubs, bushes, whatever, and they had expertise in those fields, you know, if they, like I said, if they were the ones that wanted to come forward and apply for a grant, just like everyone else does, just like the library, the Park District, all these different locations, the Historical Society, they all come forward with their, with their applications. If they would come forward, uh, we could see if there would be money in the budget for something to be done in wherever they are choosing to have this, these plantings done. That would be my recommendation, I guess, for right now.
Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, um, I'm not saying this is not a bad idea. Doing natural plantings and improving our public spaces is wonderful, no matter how that happens with TAC or, or the EAC or Public Works. But there is actually a lot going on right now, I think. And what I would like to see before we actually propose this plan that Alderman Widener, oh, Widener has introduced to us, is to have some sort of a meeting with the people that are working on it now. Obviously the EAC would, would probably be interested. I think Public Works. I would just like to see these staff people and groups that are already working find some way to sit down and, and sort of oversee this and see where the empty spaces are and see where the financials are. Because I think there's a lot more happening than we know. I mean, than all of us know. And I'd like to see that continue. Climate action is only one piece of the whole climate, environmental, um, plans that the city has accepted. So maybe this could be a time to work with staff to coordinate a plan to accomplish what your goal is, Alderman Widener, and a lot of us, um, but in a way that, um, works with what we're already doing and with the knowledge that, that various people in the Warrenville community and staff and commissions know, rather than try to start something brand new and with finance to see, um, th- this is an area where grants happen all the time. So I think that's on there and I don't want, don't really want to just put this on the shoulders of Public Works. I think we have other areas, like you've mentioned a few. And I know about the EAC and Warrenville and Bloom and just people that know, um, the specifics of some of these things. I think you're right to emphasize choosing areas, public areas that we want, might want to concentrate on, but just financially and manpower-wise, I'd sort of like to build on what we already have and the connections we already have. Just kind of move this overall goal up, but maybe not start with a whole new group or a whole new idea that we don't already have. Thanks.
City Administrator White?
Thank you. We are fortunate in Warrenville to have a lot of very passionate volunteers and volunteer groups that interact with the city. Uh, I, I hear the feedback and the commentary about... I, I hear the feedback and the commentary about potentially Public Works staff sitting in on a meeting. That a lot. We sit in and have lots of discussions with various groups about different projects. Very recently, as we were developing the plans for the Veterans Memorial, we had representatives from WIB in that meeting to help us identify native plantings with the consultants and make sure that we are considering what makes sense for those types of projects. As I'm listening to the discussion, I will say some concern starts to form when we look to staff internally for some of this. I don't want to speak for Public Works, but I'm going to, Phil can jump in if he disagrees with me. I don't think we have the expertise, I'll call it, for where it makes sense to have native planting, what kind of native planting. We do a lot of this dialogue with WIB because they do provide that expertise. I'm certainly, the EAC members have opinions about these as well. So staff tends to rely on those folks in the community and our consultants that do have that expertise to help us identify where those things make sense. There is an ongoing, not only installation costs, but then long-term maintenance, taking care of native planted areas is a different level than just hiring our landscape services. They do a great job of maintaining grass. They don't necessarily do a great job of maintaining these types of plantings. That requires a much higher, call it higher touch, if that's an appropriate term to use for these types of plants. So I think it'd be helpful for staff, from my perspective, if this is something that we want to assign a budget to and we want to find funding for something and do what Alderman Berry suggested and potentially have some sort of an additional grant dollar amount that goes towards beautification and have some other group in town that's going to coordinate that effort, install it, tell us where they want to install it, and we can evaluate if it's appropriate, if it's city-owned property, you know, all of those types of things. I, I'm a little just concerned with there being a staff-initiated effort, because I just don't know what we would be looking at in there. If that plan is evaluate available properties in town, I think that's a big target at this point. We have lots of city-owned properties, so I'm, I think we would need a more narrow scope to start to identify what the impacts of this type of budget and, and program would be. Thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate everybody's comments, and it's, it's very thought-provoking. I think there's a lot of great ideas that came forward. I think increasing the funding for this area is something that I'm seeing that the, the community has expressed a desire for. And I think similar to the sidewalk priority plan, we need to understand where the gaps are, where the opportunities are. And I guess I would look forward to seeing some kind of statement of, or map of city-owned properties and their sizes and where their location and things like that. And that would be a great first step if city staff could provide locations and acreages of city-owned properties. And at that point, it could be turned over to some of the Warrenville and Bloom and EAC members who might have thoughts and suggestions for developing the priorities, starting small and maybe moving to, to a larger footprint with this type of thing. So I guess, just, I, I don't know even what the total funding is right now for, for natural plantings and, and what the maintenance costs are either. So it didn't, it seems like there's more needs than there are solutions to it. So I guess I was looking for, for those things, what the costs are presently and the city-owned properties would be. And then maybe we can develop a prioritized plan of where some locations could be beautified with natural plantings.
So do I have a motion to bring this consideration, budget consideration, forward in this form? Or is it, I think it needs to be altered based on what I'm hearing.
Just make a suggestion, maybe that we, great conversation. Take this, and I think it'd be appropriate for the EAC to kind of flush this out a little bit more as an item for them to consider in, in their deliberations. Does anybody object to that? We could take that forward as far as native plantings and city-owned property and see if they could come back with something to us, perhaps next year around this time. It's your, it's your, your.
Yeah, that would, that would get the ball moving, moving forward. I, I guess I still think that we would need a couple of things from staff in order to get the conversation going, and that would be the locations of city-owned properties and also their size and, and what budget, you know, we have available now, what we're expending on, and whether there's a line. I guess, I don't know if there's a line item for it. I think in thinking about this and my proposal, I was trying to establish a line item so that we had, you know, purposeful money to put forward for this. So I guess those are, those are, remain my goals in this.
City Administrator?
So based on that, I, I think the, potentially the motion becomes to, again, move this forward for additional consideration, and staff can provide, now knowing some of the feedback, the budget piece for creating a, a map of city properties for native planting and evaluating the costs associated with a consultant or landscape maintenance-type person. We can pull what we're paying now for the person that does that and provide that as part of the budget process. So if that's the, whether it goes to the EAC as the future item or some other version of the initiative, if the idea is just to gather some more information to deliberate this as part of the fiscal year 26 budget and work plan, let's, I think the motion to move it forward, as we've done with some of the others, is the appropriate process. I'm sorry, fiscal year 27, we're in fiscal year 26.
That sounds great.
So we need a motion for that one? Okay. Somebody want to make the motion?
I guess the motion would be to request of staff to develop a, a list of city-owned properties and their sizes, and also to identify costs or expenditures for native plants and their maintenance on, on present properties.
So we're talking about doing that in fiscal year 27, though, right? Not this, because we don't have a line item or a budget for this, this year. So what we're talking about is for fiscal year 27 work plan and budget planning. Okay, just making sure we're talking about fiscal year 27. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries? Item number five. Consolidated public meeting schedule, City Administrator White.
I think actually Mayor wanted to make a couple of comments before I kick off the presentation, while we get the technology going.
Just for, for background, while you're getting the technology going, you may recall, a number of months ago, we chatted briefly at the table here about having a review of the current formatting for public city council meetings and committees of the whole. The impetus being that, you know, oftentimes, this is a very long meeting compared to, to normal city council meetings or committees of the whole as of this time. But is there a better way of doing it? Or a different way, a more efficient, more effective way of getting good conversation at the table, respect for staff time and respect for everybody's time here as well as the public? So with that in mind, we had decided upon Alderman Berry and Alderman Davalos sitting on a work group with staff to look at the way our agenda's structured, the way others do it, and see if there's not a, a better way or a different way that may be more efficient and more effective at the same time. So we'll turn things over to Administrator White.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that, the work group did have several meetings, and we looked at some survey data from other communities. We looked at a few different options for how consolidated meetings could work. We considered things like the meeting start time and days, looked at, you know, the two Mondays per month versus the three or four Mondays per month we have currently in the structure, and then how the, the meeting agendas are organized and the order of items. Before I get into the proposed or recommended sample agenda that was included in the packet and breaking through some of the decisions, I just want to be clear, the, at this point, the work group is recommending the option to consolidate the meetings to two Mondays and two council meetings per month. Option B or alternative to that would be to continue status quo and keep doing what we're doing now. So with that, the presentation is focused on the recommendations of the work group and consolidating the meetings. So under the current structure, city council meets first and third Monday, committee of the whole is second and fourth Monday generally. We have three separate committees, we have a chair and a vice chair assigned to each of the committee. We have workshops and workgroup meetings as needed, starts at 7:00 PM. No time limit associated with that, generally three to four meetings per month. And then one week in between each meeting where the items are deliberated at the committee of the whole, and then a week later are presented to the council. Under the proposed structure, we would be looking at city council meetings continuing on the first and third Monday. Items for discussion would be listed on that agenda under presentation and discussion items. Those would be items that were previously reported on the committee of the whole. We would no longer have committee of the whole meetings on the second and fourth Mondays. And we would move towards a chair and vice chair structure that had two-month rotations. So there would no longer be a plan commission chair, I'm sorry, not a plan commission, a public safety and finance committee chair, a community development committee, public works and infrastructure committee chair. We would just simply have a chair and vice chair that present those presentation and discussion items during that segment of the council meeting. We would still continue to have workshops and workgroup meetings as needed. Proposal is to start the meetings at 6:30 instead of 7:00 with a three-hour meeting limit. That does not mean the council could not extend past the three hours if there was lots of discussion and, and everyone felt like the discussion was moving and wanted to continue meeting. We could obviously continue past the three-hour meeting limit, but generally that would be set so that items that required additional deliberation could be continued to a future meeting. This would change from three to four meetings per month to two meetings per month. And then there would be two weeks between the items being presented under presentation and discussion, and then appearing under consent agenda generally two weeks later under that next council meeting. Nope, sorry, I want to head to one. Okay, so in the packet, we included a sample agenda. So the next three slides are just breaking down the segments of that sample agenda to provide for an explanation of the changes that you see. So this first portion of the agenda, as we have now, opening ceremonies, public comment, and officials and staff comments, no major changes here other than wording of citizens' comments to public comments, which again aligns with our current policy and process. The next section of the agenda, where we had approval of the agenda and then approval of minutes, we are recommending to strike the approval of the agenda. After we discussed with the city attorney this proposal, she initiated a discussion about that not being a required action, and then moving the approval of the minutes under consent agenda. The other changes, so consent agenda would not change. We would still have the same items that are currently there, would be reported under consent agenda. Regular agenda would include anything that's currently under regular agenda, things that require a supermajority vote or items that may need a more formal vote, like a budget ordinance or something like that. And then one other change that we propose to make to the regular agenda is right now, we have plan commission and zoning board of appeals recommendations generally are all under consent agenda. In, in this iteration, anything that is not unanimously recommended would appear under regular agenda instead of consent. So that's a staff recommendation. Those items generally end up getting removed from the consent agenda anyway. So rather than having an extra, that, we would move those items to regular agenda. We're also proposing to remove unfinished business. I don't think in the 10 years I've been here, we've ever had anything under unfinished business. So it's just always there, but not really used. And then this next section is where new agenda categories have been added. So items that were previously under committee of the whole agendas would be placed under this new category, discussion items. Those items would not be final vote items, they would be deliberation, discussion, and presentation items. Final action would occur two weeks later at the next council meeting, generally under consent agenda unless otherwise directed. Informational reports would be all of the receive and file type activities. So board and commission minutes, code enforcement activity reports, work plan updates, all the things that normally are kind of informational updates on the committee of the whole currently at the end of the agenda would be placed under information reports. Any questions so far?
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, maybe you could just remind everybody that even though we're taking off the approval of the agenda, there will still be a way to take off items in the consent agenda.
Absolutely. So it would, that option is always there. Mayor, it would look something like you making a statement of, you know, before we make a motion on the approval of the omnibus consent agenda, is there any item that anyone would like to be, to have removed for further discussion or deliberation? And that would be the opportunity to remove those items. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Could you, or someone comment to, maybe Brooke had mentioned this, our attorney. You know, right now, we do wave of second reading and blah, blah, blah. You want to comment on that?
I'll put the end. Thank you. Okay, so then additional recommended changes. We have, as staff talked about, how the budget season would lay out and budget planning. We would still continue to have our Saturday budget workshop in March. Right now, all of our department budget presentations tend to be at the end of a committee or council meeting in late January or into February. We are proposing that with this change, we would have the fourth Monday and second, fourth Monday of January, second Monday of February, which would be off Mondays under this new structure, be dedicated to department budget presentation. So we would have a similar workshop-style meeting where we would only look at staff's budget presentations for their departments and deliberations and questions about upcoming budget proposals. There would be no other items on those agendas. Again, 6:30 start time with a three-hour limit. Agenda planning meetings with the chair and vice chair would be once per month for planning the full upcoming month's discussion and presentation items. And then the proposal is to make these changes effective January 1st if the committee and council choose to move it forward. Here, I've just listed a few advantages. Two meetings per month provides some more opportunities for special workshop meetings, reduces the total number of packets and streamlines the process. Subject matter of items for discussion are more timely and adaptable, meaning we don't necessarily have to wait for a public works and infrastructure committee meeting to discuss and deliberate public works items. They would all just be under the various reports. Provides more opportunity for other chair, vice chair assignments because we're on a two-month rotation. We would not be limited to only three. And then allows for additional time between the introduction of items and the final vote if there's follow-up or more research needed with that two-week separation between the first meeting and the second meeting. Few challenges, obviously longer meetings than what we're used to. Some more planning ahead by staff to organize agendas and schedule the planning meetings. Chair and vice chair would not preside over an entire meeting. It would just be that segment or section of the council meeting that they would preside over. And obviously, this would be a significant change from our norm. So that's requires a little bit of time management and change management and adapting to just a new format. So to Mayor's point, a couple other things that were identified before I get to the first three bullet points for upcoming discussion, that's not part of this change specifically, something that we are looking at internally with the city attorney, is formalizing our public comment policy and also updating code language to talk about things like supermajority voting and other voting requirements where we have waiving of first readings and second readings with certain ordinances. We tend to do a lot of waiving of the second reading of ordinances. And so kind of talking about why, why we have that process. It's not a requirement, it's just something that the city adopted at some point in time. So we'll be talking about that at a future meeting separate of this discussion. so we'll be talking about that at a future meeting separate of this discussion. But next steps for this is to get some feedback from all of you and direction to staff about where we are with the consolidation of meetings, is this something the council would like to consider? And if there is a desire to move forward, and looking at that January 1 effective date, there is a, some code modifications that need to be made to adapt the agenda and meeting structure in our city code, and obviously to approve a 2026 meeting schedule before the end of this calendar year to reflect the changes. So with that, questions? A lot of information.
Any questions from city council? I personally like it. Alderman Berry?
I just wanted to let everyone know that under this presentations and discussion items, anything can be brought up. You know, this meeting could have something to do with public works, it could have something to do with community development, it could have something to do with finance. Nothing is so structured like it was before. And this way, like Christina said, we're not pigeonholed into that one day that we can only talk about, you know, public works. And then once in a while, somebody from community development has to come on and, and throw something in there, which really doesn't belong there, but we do it anyway. So this is just, just a lot more flexible, which is good, and it gives us a little break too, because we're only here two times a month, but it makes us stay a little bit longer, though, sometimes, which, you know, we're doing tonight, but that's okay, because these are things that are important. So, so yeah, questions? Ask Wade.
Alderman Davalos?
I just want to remind everybody that I felt a little overwhelmed the very first time we met about this, until I really thought about it, that now each of the committee of the holes, our current, only gets to meet once every two months. Now, we will have four meetings in two months, that they can present something, all of the commi, old committees of the whole, which we're calling committees now, or whatever. It, it actually seems to be a more efficient way to do things, to have four opportunities. You know, people, I'm sure each old committee of the whole may only have one, two things they're not going to have, like tonight. This, what we did tonight could be spread over four meetings. So just, that's just something that helped me calm down a little.
Any other comment? Oh, I did say that I liked it, yeah. I think it sounds great. I think it sounds more efficient, so I like the changes. Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to make the necessary code amendments to consolidate the meetings as proposed. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would this be a roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Item number six. Enterprise lease considerations for 2025 Ford F-350. That would be Public Director Phil Kukler making this presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. Staff learned recently that a 21-year-old pickup truck requires estimated $4,400 to $10,000 worth of repairs. The truck is scheduled for replacement next year in the CMRP, so we're going to be budgeting for it, and we're including it in the fiscal year 27 budget. From staff's perspective, it doesn't make sense to make that significant repairs on a 21-year-old vehicle, and then turn around and replace it next year, so we're recommending that it be replaced this year under the enterprise fleet and management program. The, there are sufficient, there's sufficient dollars budgeted in the CMRP for this. We budgeted $155,000 and have not spent, and don't project to spend all of that, so there's plenty of money there to pay for this, the lease cost for remainder this year in the aftermarket equipment they needed people to be put on the vehicle. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions? Alderman Berry?
So do they have the, the, who is it, the people that lease the vehicles to us?
Enterprise.
Do they have the vehicle available now for you to, if we needed to do this right away?
Yes, they've identified one on a lot, at a dealer.
Oh, okay. And right now, the vehicle that needs all this work is not operable?
Correct. We can't use it right now.
And what type of vehicle is that?
It's a, I think it's a F-350.
I'm sorry, it's just...
Ford F-350.
And it's just a plain, it's a pickup truck?
Yes.
Oh, okay. For 155, okay. Got it. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Widener?
I'd make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving the lease of one pickup truck through the enterprise fleet management program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. Calendar year 2025 property tax levy and abatement ordinance update. Finance Director Kevin Dolstrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman. First, on the abatement ordinance, I am awaiting the abatement ordinance as being prepared by legal council, which we should have by tomorrow. Again, as a reminder, that is an abatement of the taxes that would support the debt service from the 2023 issue. All of those will be abated as we have chosen to pay all of that debt service with tip funding. As for the property tax levy, the first reading of the ordinance would be on December 1st. The, the PTEL or tax cap for 2025 is 2.9%. I will also advise you that we will be requesting additional dollars for the police pension fund levy, as there is a, as the most recent actuarial report indicated that the need for about $157,000 in additional funding. I will also may, may make you aware that at that December 1st meeting, we will have the actuarial here from Lauterbach and Amen to answer some of the questions that, that were raised at the time we presented our, our annual report. The new construction estimates for Winfield Township are a little over $2.5 million, and from Naperville Township, almost $3.7 million in new construction, for a total of a little over $6.2 million. And finally, we'll have the second reading and consideration, as well as the public hearing at the December 15th city council meeting.
Any questions for our finance director? This was for information only, so seeing that, we will move on to item number eight. Calendar year 2026 police department donation solicitation. Police Chief Sam Bonilla?
Yes, thank you. This would be our annual request from the city council to allow us to accept donations on behalf of the Special Olympics and for National Night Out. And just to, to remind everybody, this is, these are good fundraisers that we all participate in. It's not just the police department, but it really brings the fire protection district out to help us out, it brings the community out to help us out, and a lot of people have donated a lot of money for the Special Olympics. For example, for the polar plunge event, we raised $5,714. For the cop on a rooftop event, we raised $17,516. And for National Night Out, although that is not necessarily a fundraiser, we did a first-time Special Olympics dunker cop event, which raised $1,800 for that event. For National Night Out, we also had approximately 1,500 people in attendance, and 1,200 meals were served, with 61 vendor tents utilized for area businesses and community events also going on. So these are really good events that we feel like very strongly about, and participating in, which brings a lot of people out together, so that's our request for them.
Any questions or comments from council? Alderman Widener?
I'd just like to applaud both efforts and the work that the chief does and the staff to make these events so successful and increase funding. And the other thing I think it does is it creates a connection between the police, the professional police, and our community, and breaks down a lot of barriers by the interactions that take place through these programs and events. And with that, I make a motion to recommend the city council approve the request to solicit donations for all calendar year 2026 events, including National Night Out Against Crime and Special Olympics Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run Event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine. Repossession and relocation of vehicle, vehicles ordinance amendments, and that is also Police Chief Bonilla?
Yes, so this is, this would actually, I guess, be a reconsideration, since this has already been presented to the council and approved. What we had to do is we had to make a slight amendment to the ordinance regarding this due to a recent law change, which the only change merely involved leaving notice for the vehicle owner. In the past, they've always been able to leave addresses and name and addresses, and now, because of privacy policies, we can't leave any kind of private information behind for the vehicle owner. So that's the only thing that's been changed in that ordinance.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, this seems like a routine matter that improves the effort, and with that, I make a motion to recommend the city council approve an ordinance amending city code title four, chapter eight, repossession and relocation of vehicles as illustrated through draft ordinance language strikeouts and inserts.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Who has the second? Alderman Davalos, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10. City prosecutor contract renewal. Police Chief Bonilla?
Yes, sir. So again, this is something that has been presented to city council before, and what happened was that our city prosecutor, Christine Sharikowitz, who we've had for years, had requested that the contract run through December of 2025, due to her retirement plans. However, she's going to postpone those plans till later on in the year, so we're going to request to extend that contract out to June, which is the next date that she plans to retire.
Any questions from city council? Alderman Widener?
I understand, we've always appreciated her work and effort, and with that, I make motion to recommend the city council approve the contract renewal for city prosecutor services with Attorney Christine Sharikowitz for the period of January 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. Review and file fiscal year 2026 administration, finance, and police department work plans and decision packages status report. This is, there's no action required here, this is for information only. Do we have any comments? Seeing none. Let's see. We have nothing under miscellaneous, we have nothing under closed session. I would need one more motion. Anyone? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for everyone attending and listening in, and some good, good discussion. Thank you.